Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning's prayer will be given to us by Pastor Tanya Ringer.
Let's pray. Holy God, for the gift of this new day, we pause to give you thanks. And we ask your blessing on this meeting, this morning of the Hutchinson City Council. As agenda items are discussed and decisions made, grant clear minds, authentic voices, compassionate listening, hearts open to holding the well-being of everyone in our community, and wise decisions, especially when answers are difficult to find. This Advent season, we bring our hopes and our fears to you, trusting with Mary the good news she received from the angel Gabriel, that nothing will be impossible with God. Meet us in our hopes and our fears and transform us with your impossible love, even now healing this world. Amen.
Next item, please.
Item four, oral communications from the audience.
Okay, this is the portion of the meeting where we allow those in the audience to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. If you have anything you'd like to talk with the council about, please come to the podium, state your name and zip code, and limit your remarks to five minutes.
Good morning, Heather Jobe, 735 East Fifth Hutchinson. Give a second for everyone to gather. Okay, so, good morning, Mayor, good morning, Council. I wanted to bring to you the winning candidates for the youth city council this morning. Elections were held on Saturday. We want to thank you for your support through this process. These kids have worked extremely hard to get here, and we're very proud of them. We won't take much of your time, but I would like to let each of them give their name and introduce themselves quickly.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Michael Glenn. I'm a sophomore at Trinity Catholic High School, and I will be the president of the youth city council.
Hi, Margaret Kaplan. I go to HMSA, and I'm the vice president of the city council.
Hi, I'm Ruby Tovar-Canturas. I'm a sophomore also at Trinity Catholic Junior Senior High School, and I will be the treasurer for the youth city council.
Hi, I'm Hope Yon, and I go to HMS Seven, and I'm going to be the secretary for the youth city council.
I'm Adelaide Klobus. I go to Central Christian, and I am the activities director.
Just give them a hand, I think they were charged a little bit.
So again, thank you guys so much for letting this happen. I'm really excited to see what these kids will do and what they're going to be bringing to you very soon. So their first meeting will be here on the 20th, so we encourage everyone to attend and support them.
Thank you, Heather. Thanks for all your work on this, and kudos to Garza for his idea to get this youth council started. I'm so very proud of all of you, and thank you for the effort you put into running, and I look forward to your input and the difference it's going to make in our city, so thank you.
I'd like to say one thing, Mr. Scott, golly, you know me. Two of the sitting chair people, yes, both of you two stand, please. Scott Jewell and Daryl Peterson are on our board too. Without my board, with Heather and Mike and Ms. Garcia, I couldn't have done it. I really appreciate your help, and thank you so much.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council? Okay, hearing none, please call the next item.
Item five, consent agenda.
Is there a motion or comments on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item six A, consider a resolution authorizing the city to consent to the assignment of certain documents in connection with taxable multifamily housing revenue bonds.
Good morning, Council. Angela Richard, Director of Finance. If you'll remember, a year ago, we issued IRBs for the Phase Two of Commerce Gardens Apartments. They are currently looking at closing their HUD financing, and HUD is not comfortable with how it is arranged currently. Mars Investors owns the property, and they sublease it back to Commerce Gardens Two. So Mars owns the property, but Commerce Gardens Two operates the property. HUD would like that to be the same entity, so why we are here today is the developer would like to convey ownership from Mars Investors to Commerce Gardens Two, so that they can close on their HUD financing. This does not really affect the city in any way, it's the same to us. So Tyler Ellsworth of Cootock Rock, our city attorney, and Gilmore and Bell have all reviewed the resolution and attached documents. City staff would recommend adopting the resolution and authorizing signature of the attached documents. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments?
Nope.
There a motion on this item? There's only four of us today, guys, you're gonna have to figure it out.
Because you said it that way, I would move to approve a resolution of the governing body of the city of Hutchinson, authorizing the city to consent to the assignment of certain documents in connection with taxable multifamily housing revenue bond, Series 2021, Commerce Gardens Apartments Two project of the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item six B, consider a resolution establishing rates and charges for municipal water and water services.
Good morning, Brian Clinton, Director of Public Works. In May of 2022, a water rate study was completed, and the purpose of this study was to determine whether our existing rates could meet future requirements or needs for our water utility. That study found that revenue increases are necessary, but they do align well with industry averages of around 5% a year. The proposed rate increases are going to maintain our targeted reserve balance, which is approximately three months of operation and maintenance costs, and also fund needed infrastructure improvements, and specifically begin funding a water line replacement program. And just want to talk a little bit about that water line replacement program. So in 2021, we had 82 water main breaks. In this year, through 11 months, we've had 69 water main breaks, and we've got 96 miles, or about a third of our water line system that was installed prior to 1950. So in 2016, we used an AWWA model to assess the condition of our water system, and that model recommended that we begin replacing about three miles of water line every year. And so with these rate increases, by 2027, we're planning to replace about 2.7 miles of water lines. So we're slowly getting to where we would like to be as far as water line replacements go. The proposed water rates for 2023 through 2027 were discussed with the city council in study sessions on May 24th and also June 13th, and staff recommended adopting a five-year rate plan, with the opportunity to revisit the plan with council if required during the annual budget process. And that's an important piece, especially with what inflation is doing to material costs, or chemical costs, and also construction costs. So there may be a need, as we move forward, to reassess these proposed rate costs within, you know, prior to 2027. So during that last study session, council did give staff the go-ahead to proceed with the rates listed in that attached resolution. And in the memo that I provided to you all, I have a table that shows what the proposed water rates are, look like for a residential customer using 500 cubic feet of water per month, and you can see that in 2023, that increase is going to be about $1.26 or 4.6%. So going from 27.25 in 2022 to 28.51 in 2023. Also, on the second page of the memo, you can see our rates as compared to some of the other communities in the state of Kansas, and you can see that Hutchinson's rates are regionally competitive with that group of folks. And then just to kind of put the cost of water in terms of something that's a little bit more understandable, it's going to cost our residents eight tenths of a penny for a gallon of water in 2023, and nine tenths of a penny for a gallon of water in 2027. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, Brian, thanks for the information. I don't think you mentioned, but we've been discussing this since, I believe, February or March of this year, looking at these studies, and I wish you had the graph to show, but we are, when we benchmarked against all these other cities, we are at the lower end of, the lower end of water costs. You know, we're below Manhattan, we're below Newton, Olathe, Pratt, Salina, all of those like cities. I think it's important to point that out.
Are there comments or questions for Brian?
No. Well, my comment I got, we got to have this to take care of our infrastructure, it's very important.
Unrelated, but somewhat related. Curious if you've heard what kind of funds the city will get through the Infrastructure Act for replacement of water lines?
Right, so we have applied for a state revolving fund loan through KDHE to replace about a little over a mile of water line next year, and there is a portion of that that could be forgivable based on, you know, the economic evaluation of our community.
Okay, so it's not a long-term solution? It's not 96 miles, it's one mile?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Well, thank you for that. Further comments or a motion on this item?
I'll make the motion to approve a resolution establishing rates and charges for municipal water and water services, as authorized by Section 20-301 of the Hutchinson City Code, as amended, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item six C, consider a resolution establishing rates and charges for municipal wastewater collection and treatment facilities.
So in July of 2020, a rate study was completed for our wastewater fund, and we did that because in 2018, we completed a facility plan for our wastewater treatment facility that identified a lot of improvements that were needed out of the wastewater treatment plant. So we decided to do a rate study to make sure that we could afford to do those, and kind of lay out a plan on how we could fund those improvements. And again, the purpose of this study was just basically to determine whether our existing rates were going to be able to meet our future funding requirements. And again, very similar to what the water rate study found, is that revenue increases are needed, but again, align well with that industry average of around 5% increase per year. The proposed rate increases are going to maintain our targeted reserve balance, again, about that three months' worth of operation and maintenance costs, and fund needed infrastructure improvements. And we've already completed a UV improvement project, a secondary improvement project, intermediate pump station. This year, or not this year, but in 2023, we've got the rehab of five lift stations, which is about a $2.75 million project. A grit removal project out at the headworks of the wastewater treatment plant for $820,000 is slated for 2023 as well. And then I'd like to begin doing an annual sewer rehabilitation project. So again, we've got a lot of old cast iron pipe and vitriol clay pipe out in our system, and like to be spending about $1 million a year to line and extend the useful life of those assets in our system. So the proposed sewer rates for 2023 through 2027 were discussed, again, with the city council in a study session on May 24th, and staff again recommended a five-year rate plan, with the opportunity to revisit that plan with council if required during the annual budget process. Again, I've got a table in here that shows what the impact is to a resident who uses 500 cubic feet of water, and in 2022, they're paying about $20.80, and in 2023, $21.80. So they'll see a dollar increase per month, which is about 4.8%. Also, compared ourselves to our neighbors, and again, we're really at the very low end of our neighbors as far as our sewer rates go. So again, very regionally competitive. And again, sewer, just again, to kind of put it in perspective, it's going to cost six tenths of a penny to get rid of one gallon of wastewater in 2023, and seven tenths of a penny to get rid of a gallon of wastewater in 2027. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I have the same comments I had with the water rates, and the graph is even better on this. Comparable cities out of 16, 18 cities, we are third lowest, so.
Yeah, I don't want anyone to think that we go into these study sessions with evil plans and plots and try to spend, how to spend tax dollars on this stuff. It's a balance in trying to maintain the system and trying to keep the cost down as much as we can in a realistic manner, and I think it's important that we point out, this is probably the beginning of a lot of discussions over the next year on how money's spent in regards to inflationary costs. Now, we want people to be prepared for that, because it's going to be some tough conversations for us as a city. That being said, I think we're very competitive on our water rates with the proposed fees.
I appreciate your work on this, Brian, and your eye toward the future and making sure that our infrastructure is maintained, so we're not always being reactive, which is kind of where we've been for the last couple decades, and you've made it work, so appreciate that. Is there a motion on this item or further questions to staff?
I would move to approve a resolution establishing rates and charges for access to and use of the city of Hutchinson's municipal wastewater collection and treatment facilities as authorized by Section 19-803 of the city code, as amended, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item six D, consider a resolution and development agreement for hotel, conference center, and restaurant.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. Counsel, you have a resolution before you. Basically, the resolution just provides the authority for all parties to sign the development agreement that follows behind that. I want to make a correction on my cover memo. It's not 165 sleeping rooms, it's 100 rooms with 65 rooms that have two beds, so it's 100 rooms. The development, and I'll emphasize a couple things as we go through here to dispel some rumors that I've heard. First of all, the developer will invest $18 million. It's not the city of Hutchinson, it's the developer. The developer will invest $18 million. We don't have $18 million for a hotel, so want to make that that clear. And the developer will have 100-room hotel, 15,000 square feet for a conference center, and it will have a restaurant as well. There are timelines within the development agreement for the design, for the construction of all those things. The city has commitments as well, and one thing I want to point out for the city, we don't really pay anything until the hotel is built. So there's very little risk for the city here. We don't pay until the hotel is built. Yes, the council will be asked to approve a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds. Again, we don't give the money for that. We are just a financing conduit for industrial revenue bonds. That will be the primary commitment. And then the responsibilities that we have will occur after the hotel is actually built and ready and has a certificate of occupancy. That includes the hotel, that includes the conference center, and that includes the restaurant. At that time, when the conference center and the facility has received the certificate of occupancy, the city will pay $1 million. And as I go down through these, it's being paid out of transient guest taxes, and we do have those funds available. So $1 million upon certificate of occupancy issued for the project.
Will you explain what a transient guest tax is for those that might not know?
Well, that's what we collect on everybody that stays in a room overnight in Hutchinson. It's 7%. And a portion of those fees, and I'll get to that in just a moment, will be going towards this project. And transient guest taxes, they're charged, and then they're used for what will benefit tourism, what will cause people to stay overnight in Hutchinson. And the case law says that that is whatever the council says it is. Okay? All right. So $1 million upon completion, the city will approve a community improvement district of 2%. That's basically an additional sales tax on the overnight stays. The city will issue a letter of intent for $18 million for industrial revenue bonds for the facility. That gives them sales tax and property tax exemptions that are beneficial to the developer. We'll pay $50,000 per year for the first three years of operation of the hotel after the certificate of occupancy has been issued. We're still collecting those transient guest taxes even right now. They'll be collected while this project is being completed, and so those additional funds will be there as well in the transient guest taxes. Now, the transient guest tax that we're contributing is basically three sevenths. 7% transient guest tax, 4% goes to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the other 3% is going towards this project. And as a part of that project, there are certain standards that have to be maintained, and you'll see the term in there. It talks about an upper mid-scale hotel. There are there are standards in the travel industry, according to the Smith Travel Research. They have classifications for everything. Upper mid-scale hotel, for example, would be a Hilton Garden Inn, and they have to maintain that standard in order to continue to receive the transient guest taxes. So basically, what we're doing is reimbursing the developer for the cost of the conference center. But if they want to continue to receive those transit guest taxes in the future, the flag has to be maintained. The upper mid-scale hotel must be maintained. It can't change over to something else, a lower flag, otherwise the transient guest taxes stop. Okay, all right. I think that's most of what I have. I will tell you this, we have spent a number of years trying to address the hotel problem in Hutchinson. And recently, I had to gather it together for another request for records, and I found the request for proposals we did and specific conversations with specific developers.
Market studies.
And we've been trying to address it for a long time now, and this is the most viable of the proposed projects we've had. And like I said, very little risk for the city because we don't really pay anything until it's built and done.
Paul, I appreciate your work on the development agreement and buttoning it up better than the last convention center we had. I don't think you were here when that was done, but I think that this sufficiently protects us and makes sure that we're going to maintain a quality standard. I did want to clarify just a few things a little bit more deeply. You talked about the IRBs. Of course, the city has no obligation to pay those industrial revenue bonds, it's the private entity. But I also wanted to touch on the million dollars. Again, that transient guest tax isn't paid by local taxpayers, it's paid by visitors. And ever since, so when we had the atrium, in their development agreement, they got 3% of the transient guest tax. But when they sold and they didn't maintain standards, we found an in, because there was a new owner, to break that contract, and we've just been collecting those. They've just been sitting in a pool. So it's not like we're taking a million dollars out of our general fund that should or could go to other projects. These are specifically designed for tourism purposes, so that is not an outlay of any funds that we don't have. So I think that's important for the community to know. I also got a little bit of feedback on the CID, the Community Improvement District. We know these are wildly unpopular in retail districts, but they're very common in hotels. I think all of our nicer hotels have a 2% CID, again, because locals aren't paying that unless you're, you know, spending a night in a hotel instead of your home. Those are paid by out-of-town guests. So just a little bit more clarification on that. The last thing I've gotten feedback on and questions about is the developer itself. So I don't know if anybody is here from Amber, no?
No.
But I think that we need to get that information out into the community, and so there's a level of transparency where people are comfortable with who is coming into this community and, you know, investing $18 million. This developer is from Wichita, so is somebody well-known in this space, and I don't know if you want to speak to that, or Leanne's shaking her head, she's like, "Don't make me come up here and speak to that." But it's what happens when you come, Leanne. There's always that chance you'll be called up.
I can tell you this, counsel, this developer has built other hotels in Hutchinson, so we have experience with them. Did quality work, quality facilities, and so that's why we have confidence in this particular developer in this particular project.
The Community Improvement District, just to be clear, is only for the hotel. It's not reaching out to Aldi's or... I think it's good that we clarify that and make that very clear.
And those contracts will be coming to the council later for approval, for the actual approval of the district. And when you do a community improvement district, it has a legal description for it, and it'll be similar to the legal description that's on the back of the current development agreement, and so it's only within that area. It is not citywide, it's not an area-wide, it's only on that property.
But to be clear, the developer has plans to develop the entire, I think, six acres, and so it would probably be written to include that entire development.
Yes.
Like the restaurant. But yeah, Aldi's wouldn't be in that, it's not going to matter because our sales tax on food is going away anyway, but we're not going to pull in Olive Garden or any of that.
That was some concern and feedback I had heard, and my understanding was, is only the hotel, the convention center, and the restaurant.
That's correct.
So I think we've covered most of the city's portion, but the last thing on there was the $50,000 for three years. Convention centers are loss leaders, they do not make money. And when we first started conversations with this developer, it was just about a hotel. We reached out and made the request for a convention center, and so that's what that small amount of subsidy will be for the first three years. That was a concession because of our request.
And there'll be sufficient funds in the transient guest tax fund to pay that as well.
Yeah, again, no local taxpayer dollars
No.
are being expended for this project. Other questions or comments? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this item? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I would move to approve a resolution of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, approving the execution and delivery of a development agreement for the design, development, construction, operation, and maintenance of a hotel, conference center, and restaurant within the city, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Garza?
Oh, it's about time, yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes, and thank you to our partners in the audience and to staff for getting this done. It's been years in the making, and I'm excited for NJC double A and all of our tourism partners, so thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Item 7A, consider city manager employment agreement for 2023.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. Counsel, you have before you a proposed employment agreement for the new city manager, and I forewarned him that you'll call him to the podium because that's what you always do. And so you can submit those questions there. I will tell you, the contract itself is just like the other city manager contracts. You've seen the terms, it's really the exact same language as before with the compensation that's provided, the duties of the city manager, and a beginning date of January 1. We won't expect you to be here on January 1.
I believe that's a Sunday, right?
But forewarn you, the city can really be demanding. So we have that, and counsel, unless you have questions, you may have questions for Mr. Francis.
Comments or questions?
Well, I think we asked a lot of questions, and here we are.
You did ask a lot of questions.
Yeah.
You were thorough. I can assure everyone that you were thorough.
It was a pretty extensive search process and interview process, so happy to be here, excited to welcome you today, and I think we'll go ahead and vote on this item, and then if you don't mind taking a few minutes to introduce yourself to the community, that would be fantastic.
I'll make the motion to approve the employment agreement with Kendall Francis for the position of Hutchinson City Manager and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes, go ahead, Kendall.
Welcome.
Thank you, and really, thank you. I am honored and I'm humbled that you would give me this opportunity to help serve the citizens, help lead this organization. Kendall Francis, just a little bit about me, I was born and raised in Kansas, lived here my entire life. My wife Heather and I have four children, ages 15 to 27, and so my family and I were anxious to get this move going. Please give me some time, we're transitioning out. I won't be here on the first, hopefully, and thanks to K-State's last game, I will probably be enjoying the fruits of their bowl game, but I will be here as quickly as possible soon after that. But I am very excited for this opportunity. I want to say thank you. I've had a few people who have reached out to me, connected on social media and other platforms to introduce themselves and to welcome me, so I'm very touched by that, so thank you. To those that I've yet to meet, I'm looking forward to it. I'm very much a collaborative person, and so I'm very much looking forward to the opportunities that we have to work with our community partners to help move this city forward. To my team that is here in the audience, I'm anxious to get to know you better, to start working with you, and we're going to roll up our sleeves and we'll get to work very soon.
Fantastic, well, welcome again, and anything you need help on, reach out to any of us at any time.
Thank you very much, I truly appreciate that.
Thank you, Kendall. All right, next item, please.
Item 7B, childcare market study report from United Way.
All right, I see my presentation here. Do I just need to start the slideshow, I suppose?
Usually someone pops up.
Hey, there we go. All right, great. So thanks for having me today. My name is Bradford Wiles, I'm the director of the Archer Lab at Kansas State, your Big 12 champion. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit today about what we have done in terms of market study and looking at needs and capacity for access to quality, affordable childcare in Reno County. So I'm just going to go through a quick introduction, highlight some key results and findings, and then the bulk of what I'll talk about really is related to the recommendations for Reno County as a whole, and then there are a couple for early care and education providers, and then there's an opportunity, of course, for some final thoughts and discussion. So some of the key results, so I don't want to go sort of overboard on methodology, but essentially, we had survey results, and we also conducted focus groups with four main groups of people. We did focus groups with early care and education providers, with families who were looking for care, families who currently have early care and education for their children, and those from the general public. And a few of the real important things are pay inequities for early care and education providers relative to other opportunities in the community, the true cost of quality care, recognizing that childcare is not just a business, but also provides an important service to the community. And then part of the task for me was to, excuse me, look at future projections, understanding change in the community, and so I'll get to that. So one of the most difficult things to confront is the fact that for most of your early care and education providers, their median income is around $25,000 to $30,000. And what that means is, well, it's even worse because they don't have benefits like retirement or health insurance, and they work exceptionally long hours, more than 50 on average, and there's a lot of discussion about the fact that you can go down the street and earn money as an entry-level employee at Brahms or McDonald's or you name the store. It doesn't have to be fast food, of course. But it's a real problem, right? I don't know if any of you have been around young children recently, but I'll just say that the most tired and most sick I've ever been was when I worked in an early care and education facility. They're exhausting, it's really important work, you're literally building their brains, you're helping them learn about how to get along with one another, how to solve problems, and how to regulate their emotions. And so I say all that to say, it's really important that we retain the professionals who do that work, and when other options are more appealing, based on the reality of better benefits and shorter hours in the work week, it really becomes a problem. So one of the other elements of that is that the general public typically doesn't understand why it costs so much. There are a number of factors that go into that. There's always a bit of discussion around KDHE regulations. I'm just going to say, state for the record, that those regulations are in place to make sure that children are safe and healthy. If you're, if there's a desire to change those, great, I encourage you to interface with your legislators, but for the purposes of this work, we're going to operate within the framework that exists. And the reality is, when you look at these figures, as soon as you essentially have two children, it's, you're going to have to make a decision about whether to work or stay home. Typically, that affects the women in the household much more than men, and infant care, if you can get it, is the most expensive, and there are, again, regulatory elements of that, but, you know, pure and simple, if there weren't the regulation, we would have children in cages. And so that's why we don't do that. But, so the cost of quality care is important. Childcare is expensive, but let's talk, let's hear from some of the voices that we got. It requires an immense amount of overtime. You know, I think the quote about, on the left-hand side, about planning for lunch is really staggering, right? This individual went to a professional development workshop and was going to go out to lunch and had to sit there and think about how expensive the lunch was, and factor in how many hours she had to work to pay for that lunch. Now, I would venture to guess that most of us in this room don't have to factor that in by the hourly rate that we make. Lots of, lots of, talk about lack of benefits, these, by the way, are representative quotes. These are not just things that I thought were important. There are multiple iterations of this, the way that we conduct our methodology, these things are essentially exemplars of a larger stack of similar quotes. One of the other elements that I think you'll pick up here, too, is there's a lot of stigma or lack of respect for the field as a whole, and there are ways to address that, but it's really, as you can see, a difficult scenario for our early care and education providers. And I mention these things to get to some of the real difficulties, so. things to get to some of the, the real difficulties. So, um, wanna, you know, following up with that, um, there's just a, a complete, uh, feeling from providers that, um, you know, when, when you look at this bottom one, I think that's really important, right? They're paying three fifty an hour, but they're not making three fifty an hour, right? They're buying food, they're buying cribs, they're ma- they're paying insurance for their, their, you know, have to maintain upkeep. They're, you know, they're, all the things that a business has, except that businesses are generally scalable. Childcare is not. So, the idea that the free market will work in this, in this, um, domain is very difficult. Um, yes, it will to a certain extent. You can cater to very high-income clientele, if that's the aim, but in doing that, you're not really affecting the workforce, right? The people that aren't able to go to work because they're caring for children. Um, that's a scenario where, uh, the children are likely not getting the, the most benefit from a, qualified and licensed early care and education provider, and that, the local economy suffers because you've got this latent talent that's available, but you can't tap it because they're home. Um, so, one of the things that comes up, and this is from, um, our general public and, uh, and the parents who are, are seeking care and who have care, is that, um, first, there's this notion that, um, the, uh, the different types of care are somehow hierarchical, that a center is better than an early, uh, than a, a home environment. And I will simply say that the licensure requirements are the same for both. Uh, in fact, um, I would, I would argue very much that in-home providers are your biggest, uh, most important set of, of individuals here, not to discount centers, but in Reno County, half of the children in care are in care at licensed home providers. Um, you benefit. All of the, the City of Hutchinson benefits from early care and education. Um, what we found in our study was that for those who had care, they were adding sixty thousand dollars to their household income. So, why is that? The people who were seeking care and the people who were looking for care, the, the median level of education was a bachelor's degree. Um, we have people who are qualified to work but are, are not able to do so. Um, and yeah, they, they have to, to pay some of that sixty thousand dollars for childcare, but again, they're contributing to the local economy. We know that, uh, staffing issues have been very difficult lately. So, looking at the projections, um, you have a, you have a really interesting scenario here in Hutchinson, uh, and in Reno County writ large, and that is that you have, uh, a really high level of older adults or those aging out of the workforce, and you've got, uh, a similar level of, of younger adults with very few, um, with, with a reduced number in between those two, uh, peaks of age. Um, what does that mean? Well, the first is, as people age out, um, you do end up freeing, freeing up some housing. People retire and move elsewhere. People die, their houses are available. Um, and in order to grow a community, you need to have two things. You need to have housing, you need to have childcare, right? People can't work without it. Um, one of the problems with the aging of the population, though, is your early care and education providers are also aging out without replacements behind them. And why aren't replacements coming behind them? Well, would you go through student debt, years of training, or even six months of training to then make a job that pays you less than the box store down the street with increased stress and, um, and flatly a lot of liability and responsibility? Um, so that, that's a real problem. Um, in order to attract and retain a younger workforce, you need to have those elements in place. Um, most young families are, uh, well, first, they're at the lowest level of income they're going to have throughout their lifespans, and so essentially least able to pay. Um, and, uh, and many households now have student loans for, for both, um, partners if they're a, a two-parent household. Um, do want to indicate that Hispanic families are the fastest growing in Hutchinson as well as Reno County? And, um, and so, making sure that we interface with Hispanic families. Um, I, I will say that, uh, for this particular study, it was very difficult to, uh, to reach Spanish-speaking families. Uh, part of that is on me, um, but I, it, it certainly is an effort that needs to, to follow through, and so that'll, that'll come into the recommendations. Um, and I, I mentioned the housing element. So, um, these are, these are the, the recommendations that I really, uh, wanna focus them on. Um, your existing early care and education workers are your biggest asset. When they leave, oh, I'll just say this, you've had, um, seven, uh, home-based, uh, licensed facilities closed and one center closed since June. So, if you figure, you know, the center is a hundred and fifty kids, ten kids per home, so you're looking at two-hundred-and-twenty kids who now don't have care. According to the latest Child Care Ware statistics, uh, the Reno County has, uh, a, a need for an additional eighteen-hundred early care and education slots. So, keeping what you have is critical before you can even begin to think about growing. Um, one of the other elements, what, something that was very encouraging is the general public does understand childcare as an economic development issue. Um, when I started this work, I went in like, it's for the children. Well, children can't vote. Um, and so, that's not quite, uh, you know, as helpful. Um, there's a, a lot of data out there that indicates that, uh, family functioning, family cohesion, relationship satisfaction, um, and, uh, the lack of dissolution of marriages is related to access to quality, affordable childcare, which makes some inroads, right? But, the bottom line is, it's the economic development component that really moves the needle. And, um, I would like to think that for all of us during the pandemic, we had a nice awakening to what that looks like. Uh, I have a four-year-old son. All of my colleagues know him because he had to sit with me during my Zoom meetings. So, uh, the fact that it affects productivity, absenteeism, morale, et cetera, is, is not lost either. Um, so, I would encourage the use of the ARPA funds to provide some funding to support existing childcare workers, bring them up to a living wage, and work with, um, them and, uh, city and county, uh, to begin to work on subsidizing that, um, as the ARPA funds phase out. Uh, you'll, what, what I will tell you is, uh, you'll see the benefits, um, within the two years that those ARPA funds will, will phase out, and I would be, I, I would guess that it would be pretty easy to, um, to, to have that support maintained simply because the lack of childcare is already having a really devastating effect. Um, I do think things like this, um, I, uh, are, are really important, understanding where it is, helping people understand, uh, both, uh, employers and employees to understand. Um, I, um, and then the, the fourth bullet point there is also really critical. So, um, there are different ways of operating childcare facilities. Um, one of the, the important points here is that, uh, there are all different models for doing this. So, one of the things I suggested for early care and education home-based providers is forming a co-op, right? Um, we experienced co-ops in, you know, I grew up on a farm, went to the, you know, the, uh, grain co-op, right? Uh, I lived in a rural community. We had, uh, co-op energy. Uh, same kind of thing can be done. Uh, it will greatly benefit home-based providers, but the problem is, they're home-based providers. They're working fifty-plus hours a week on average. Uh, how are they gonna be able to, who's got the energy to do that? I spend a few hours around my kid and I'm exhausted. Um, and, uh, sorry, Hunter, you'll watch this sometime. Um, but, uh, but I, I, you know, all joking aside, um, there needs to be a champion there. And so, that last bullet point really gets to one of the key elements of this, and that is, in this work, in this building of early childcare, of early care and education capacity, um, a, an individual needs to be dedicated to doing that, paid to do it. What we know in this work is that when we have coalitions, they're always part of someone else's job. And so, when you're doing part of your job to advance, you can take that so far, but at some point, you'll need to dedicate the full forty hours a week plus to make things happen. And so, I suggest here that a community development professional put in a, a, um, a, a neutral entity, um, to advance this work with expertise in, um, community development and all that entails. And I'm not talking about an entry-level position, like, uh, you know, ninety to a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, again, I suggest that you use ARPA funds for that, and then take, reassess and, and look at the value-added a- as a component of that. If that position goes away, well, so be it. But I also, um, would say that, uh, it is my view that that position will pay for itself very rapidly in terms of the availability of workforce and revenue generated as a, as a result. Um, just looking at simple calculations, every time that, uh, a business loses an employee with turnover, they usually are spending about half of that salary to train up the next, uh, staff member. Um, and so, lack of affordable care has brought a lot of, of women essentially out of the workforce, yet, um, they, they could return and provide returns on investment for both, uh, the community and, of course, to, to help, uh, with their family income. Um, there are a couple of, of other recommendations, um, again, supporting Hispanic families. Um, we certainly got Hispanic families responding. Uh, what I didn't get were Spanish-speaking, um, respondents, uh, I would say monolingual Spanish-speaking respondents. Uh, and so, I would, uh, I, we're still working on making sure that we interface, uh, with those families. Um, there are a number of public funds that, uh, go into early care and education that, um, are in, are not being optimally used. Um, the, uh, school districts get, um, support for preschool programs through the state. Those programs, um, can be, those funds can be used in a multitude of different ways. And currently, in, uh, in Reno County and in Hutchinson, um, those funds are essentially only being used by the school district for the school district. The idea of those funds was to be able to support early care and education in partnership with the community for a number of reasons, but not the least of which is, when it's only in the school, well, they run on school hours. So, you've got the school district who is able to provide care, but then, you know, Christmas break is coming up, certain holiday break is coming up, uh, spring break, professional development days, et cetera. Um, when, when school districts partner with early care and education providers in the community, they can pay for the same slots that they would pay for at school, yet kids would have year-round care, right? So, there's a real lost opportunity there, and let me just be really clear. You have so much demand that, uh, it, it, it just wouldn't make a dent in the number of kids who need care, but it would make a significant dent in the number of hours of care required because of the lack of, of the school calendar affecting it. Um, so I'd, I highly recommend school districts working, uh, with private, with the private sector for these public-private partnerships that are so critical, um, to, to really help with, um, meeting the, the early care and education needs of children, and to provide the reliable, uh, opportunity for families to, to work as a consequence, uh, and not work on only the school calendar. Um, one of the, the other key elements is, um, you know, there are some really important tax incentives. Um, there's some really, uh, elegant ways of working with community funds and public funds. Um, and so, working with organizations like The Chamber, working with, uh, you know, your hospital here, ensuring that, you know, if, uh, an employer is going to build a childcare, um, that they use their funding to do that if it's for their employees. If it's not, if it's for the community and their employees, great, the community should support that. But I, I really, uh, wanna caution the fundraising of public funds to essentially provide care for a, a select group of people. Um, I, there are, uh, I think that I provided you with a, a handout, um, around the benefits for employers. Um, I, I really encourage you to take a look at that. Um, there are multiple tax incentives, um, particularly, if, for every dollar that, um, a business invests in supporting their, uh, employees with childcare, they'll, they don't pay the eight percent payroll tax on that, and then, for the first year, they'll get fifty percent of that back in a tax credit, not a tax break credit. So, whether you owe taxes or not, you get it, you won't, never. Um, and, uh, and then for families, if there's a flexible spending account, they don't pay taxes on that, and so, they can use those dollars tax-free to pay tuition for their children going to childcare. Um, so there's some really novel tax incentives that have not been available to smaller businesses up until the 2022 legislative session. Um, I, uh, you know, I, I think, um, most of the, the equity between licensed care in the home and licensed care in centers could really, uh, be addressed by making sure that a living wage is provided to all of them, and that, that, uh, will go away. But, one of the quotes that I didn't put up here, uh, that I think is really critical is, um, at public events, early care and education providers will be asked to watch kids just off the cuff because families wanna go enjoy the, the festivities. Like, I'm a professor. Nobody asked me to give a lecture at, at these, uh, festivals. Um, you know, I, I'm sure all of you have other jobs, uh, it, but it seems that early care and education providers are bearing the brunt of, of the need even in their off time. Um, and it's, it's difficult. And of course, people refer to it as babysitting, and I, I just, I'll just tell you, that's not what it is. Um, so, uh, yeah, just for, for the early care and education providers, I really, um, want them to consider a cooperative. I really think a, a, uh, position housed in, in Hutch would facilitate that. Um, it'd be a win-win for the community. Um, be able to provide more stable care, ongoing care, Be able to provide more stable care, ongoing care, and for the early care and education providers, they'd have a single voice with the opportunity for benefits and other mechanisms to help them earn living wages and actually retire with, with some money. And, and then I already talked about that last point. One of the, the big points about the school use is that what we find again and again is that as these collaborations form and are moving forward, the trust and reciprocity and collective competence starts to really gain momentum so that when communities are doing these public-private partnerships, they're, they then are able to affect change across multiple other domains rather than just in childcare. And so, I really see a lot of this as foundational to organizational progress, you know, action and change. So, with that, I am open to any questions, comments, thoughts. Cheers for K-State. That's it.
Oh goodness. Well, thank you, Dr. Wiles. Appreciate all your work on this, and I know we've already had one conversation and lots of questions, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to limit my questions here. But, I'm curious on the 1,800 necessary slots that are not currently available, was that just, how'd you come to that number? Was it extrapolated from surveys, or?
Yeah, so, that comes directly from Childcare Aware of Kansas. And what they, they are the Childcare Resource and Referral Agency in the state of Kansas. And they conduct in-depth surveys every quarter with all of the early care and education providers in the state of Kansas. So, they know how much they charge, they know what their wait lists are. They then compare that to the demographics of number of kids under the age five, and the typical demand for entry into the workforce, both adults in a home working. And that's how they, they arrive at that figure.
Okay. That's pretty staggering for a community our size.
It was, yes. It was, it was surprising to me as well.
When you talk about a cooperative, is there a working model for that?
Yeah, yeah, there are a number of them, actually. I think, yes, and I can provide some data on those as well as some templates for how to, how to get that done. But yes, it wouldn't be, you wouldn't be the guinea pig for that here. You would simply be, you know, another iteration of that model.
Brentford, how, how do we better reach the Hispanic community and meet their needs?
Yeah. Well, the first is, build that trust, build that reciprocity. And part of that is the work that my team is now doing, translating the survey into Spanish, working with organizations who serve Spanish-speaking families. And flatly, it just takes a lot of time in front of and with Spanish-speaking families to gain that trust. I mean, flatly, I'm a white guy, I wouldn't trust me either, you know? I, it's been, it's been hard, particularly for monolingual Spanish families. And so, it really takes time and support. And one of the things that will help is supporting licensed early care and education in the, in the Spanish-speaking Hispanic families, and partnering with Childcare Aware of Kansas and Kansas Child Care Training Opportunities, CASIDO. That's the best way to leverage that. They have Spanish-language materials, Spanish speakers who can steward and support Hispanic early care and education opportunities. It takes a lot of time and effort and energy. And again, I think part of that role for that community development position is to focus energies there, to be able to advance that effort. It will serve you very, very well.
In other communities where they may have a position like that, where are they housed? You mentioned a non-political neutral.
Yeah, so I'm incredibly biased, but I, I have seen a lot of success when they're housed in extension. You know, typically, we are very trusted, we're embedded in the community, there's access to the expertise at Kansas State, so that, there, there are certainly some structural supports that are really helpful, typically very apolitical. We strive to be that. We never know who's going to be in office, and so we just try to, you know.
This whole KU-K-State seems pretty political.
Wait, there's KU here? I'm out of here.
I don't know the KU extension office.
Yes, there is, and.
Yeah, I haven't seen a KU extension office.
That's what I mean.
They're gonna be in Baton Rouge.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or New Orleans.
But, you know, but there are, there are other options. I would, you know, certainly, the Community Foundation would be another, even the Chamber of Commerce would be another. But, you know, just, just making sure that the, the position is well-funded, you want to get good talent. This is not, you know, this is a challenge. And expertise is necessary. Again, my bias is towards extension simply for the access to the expertise at K-State that can also provide support here. But, you know, that's not my decision.
What, what have you seen in your research on the long-term funding sustainability? Like, what kind of models?
Yeah, so typically, what ends up happening after these infusions of cash is, the businesses start to recognize the increased productivity that came along with that. And when I say increased productivity, not just the productivity at work, but the, the decreased absenteeism. So, most of the research that we see indicates that for any given 30 working days, you'll lose about two of those for difficulties with childcare arrangements, right? When there's not a lot of quality affordable care available, we see shuffling of kids to and from different locations, that requires a lot of coordination, flatly, a lot of cognitive load to do those things. And when you do those, you're distracted at work. Also, flatly, when you're working for a company that's not supporting you in trying to find childcare or, or keep childcare, that decreases your morale, it makes it even harder for you. What we find is that for those businesses who get this kind of support, they're more than happy, particularly in, I would say, in a incentivized world now of 30% for every year after the first, which is 50%, they're flatly going to gain much more than they lose, even investing there. So, you know, I, I have a very simple philosophy about it, happy workers are good workers. There's a ton of data about reduced absenteeism, increased productivity, increased morale, and increased retention of your employees. For every employee that, that turnover, that costs businesses a ton. And so, typically, what ends up happening is, businesses will contribute to a, a community fund, the community will then, the community fund will then disperse that to early care and education providers to bring them up to a living standard, and their, their rates will remain the same, but they'll then have the opportunity to do sliding scales with families. They'll have the opportunity to really expand if they need to, because they can make money now, or at least have a living wage. It's very difficult to get a loan to expand when you're making $25,000 a year.
So, the idea is to use the ARPA funds to prove the pilot?
Yeah, yeah, essentially. I mean, and, and in the short term, keep the talent you have. I mean, I can't emphasize that enough. You're already in dire straits now, the more that you start to hemorrhage those jobs. And, and by the way, I don't blame them. I mean, I don't. You know, what they do is a community service, but they're not being paid for the value that they provide to the community.
Yeah, it's pretty shameful.
Yeah.
So, I'm certainly, I'm certainly open to that concept. I've been very hesitant to use ARPA funding for salary subsidies because there's, we just have no plan. We have no plan to make it long-term sustainable. So, if we do move in that direction, with, in collaboration with the county, I think we would need to start working on different models, in the case that businesses don't step up, you know, maybe a community-wide solution. So.
Yeah, it's fair. I, there are certainly examples where communities have stepped up without the need to, you know, raise taxes or, or use public funds beyond that. Now, I, so I think there's an opportunity there, if we start planning now for that sustainability, to really measure the, essentially, the, the economic benefit that businesses receive and be able to say, hey, come on.
Well, and we do have a very generous business community here in Hutchinson. And I think having those stories, those models from other communities, how businesses contributed would be helpful. There's a lot of ways we can put our own spin on that and see what works. I'm curious, council's thoughts on the report, any, any questions, thoughts on recommendations?
Well, could you speak to the non-scalable part? I understand, like, the home daycares can't grow, but are you saying that because, you know, the, the infant to?
The ratio.
Ratios can't ever get bigger, and I understand that, but is that, is that why you say that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, at the, at the end of the day, you, your labor costs are the same, whether you're caring for 20 kids.
You can't get any more efficient.
Yeah, right. It's just not scalable, right? Because you still have to have the same number of employees for the same number of kids. And, so yeah, you can, you can provide more care, in theory, I mean, right, if you're a family, you can only provide care for 10 kids.
Right, right, right.
But, there's no ability to add five kids for, with that existing one person, if you get my meaning. And if I may, you know, early care and education, it's private school. I mean, that's what it is, right? So, we're asking families who are at the lowest level of the income that they'll generate over their life course, to pay for private school for their kids. And that is a stiff ask. That's a hard ask.
One last question.
Sure.
Before we talk about next steps. I know there's a, there's a recommendation nationally that low-income families should not spend more than 7% of their income on childcare. I know that those rates, although low and not adequate to pay childcare workers an adequate or livable wage, are pretty high for some in our community. But, there are others in our community who are able to pay far more. I'm wondering if any, any study was done on the appetite for, or the kind of ceiling of what parents were willing to pay in those higher-income families?
Yeah, so we, we have in our data, a look at what families currently pay and what they expect to pay. And unfortunately, what they're currently paying and what they expect to pay are actually, what they're currently paying is more than what they would expect to pay.
Yeah.
And so, there's not a lot of appetite for families who are higher income to subsidize those families that are lower income in individual care settings. What I would say is, there could be opportunities for businesses who are paying those individuals, those higher salaries, to support that. High-income families are always more than welcome to provide philanthropy to anyone they see fit. If I were making a recommendation, I would urge that for childcare providers, for your own childcare providers, whoever they may be. They perform a Herculean task. I would, if providers can make a living wage, I would then support very much a sliding scale for families based on income level. Currently, it seems really hard to ask early care and education providers to offer a sliding scale when they're barely able to make ends meet as it is.
Okay. Thank you. Gary, thoughts on next steps?
Well, I.
Or Kendall? I don't know who to ask now.
Well, maybe we could ask, ask Professor, what typically, after this happens, what, what steps does the community take, and maybe what, what was discussed at the county level? Did they get into that kind of discussion?
Yeah, thank you. So, typically, at the end, I'll make recommendations, and in this case, the, the paid position is the most critical. But, one of the things I will provide are budgets for what that incentive for early care and education providers looks like, as well as the mechanism for getting those out. And, you know, now, to be fair, typically, communities aren't sitting on $4.5 million that they have to distribute. That's, that's a rarity and something that is both a blessing and a curse for the exact point of sustainability that council, council, mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you, that your mayor provided. So, I, I think from my perspective, a professional, a mechanism and administrative body to distribute funds to current providers, as well as an entity that is not extension, that is tasked with seeking applications to, to try some different models for early care and education, ensuring that public dollars are going to benefit the most number of, of families around the median income, so that we're not, again, getting this, this ceiling of, yeah, well, okay, there's so much demand that I will pay, I can pay more, and thus, the people who need to work at the, the entry-level positions, or even at those mid-level positions, can't do so.
Well, we do have a joint meeting today with the county, and maybe we can establish some timelines. You know, time's a-ticking.
I feel it.
On this ARPA deadline. And I, I want to make sure that anything we do is, it's, it's going to take time to implement, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure that K-Ready leadership team probably has some thoughts on, on how best to move forward, and I would like to see us partner on the staffing piece with, you know, similarly to our neighborhood development positions that are multifunded.
Yeah, I, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. Yeah, I, you have a tremendous coalition already in existence here. I would leverage those relationships, and I would, I would also encourage the, the city council and county council to essentially force people to work together, even if they don't like it right now. You know? Communities are like families. There are siblings. Sometimes we beat on our siblings, and sometimes our siblings beat on us, right? But other times, our siblings love us. And, you know, we can have these love-hate relationships, but in the end, when our siblings have kids, we'll just about do anything for those kids, right? And so, just, just recognizing that you have a family here, it can be functional or not. You know, I like to put the fun in dysfunctional, but nonetheless, you know, there are strong recommendations in the full report there, I didn't get here. You know, incentivize those collaborations. And, and flatly, you know, punish those who won't play nicely. That's really the only way you're going to get through this, and, and really make capacity happen. You just don't have time to, you know, play around. You just don't have time to, you know, play around with people who are going to undermine the work. You just don't. The time is ticking.
Okay, other comments or questions?
I, I do just want to acknowledge the folks here. Thank you, and in particular, the K-Ready leadership team and the participants and respondents who, who were kind enough to give their time to, to help make, make a difference in their community through this work.
Well, I'd certainly like to echo those thoughts, and thank you to those in attendance today. Childcare did rise to the top as the number-one community priority for use of ARPA funds after a very long and extensive public input process. So, I know that all of these people listed on the K-Ready leadership team have been discussing this for years and forcing those collaborations, and I think from that perspective, our community is a lot further in the process than maybe we think. We don't always get along together all the time, but they are really, these, these early childhood providers have come, come together to try to solve this problem and, and help their own staff, and they have a heart and passion for it. So I look forward to discussing next steps with our community partners and the county, the K-Ready leadership team and others. And definitely thank you for, for your work.
Happy to do it, thank you.
Thank you, Bradford.
Okay, next item, please.
Item eight, report of city officials.
What do you have, John?
We have a full agenda today. I'm, I'm pretty good right now.
Okay. How about you?
Welcome, Kendall, and thanks for your work, Denise, in the K-Ready thing. It's amazing to me, the hard decisions or the things we have to figure out as a council, anyway, but I accepted the challenge and rock chalk.
What do you have, Steve?
Okay, I know I beat that. First of all, what I wanted five years ago coming on here, and I went to the schools and I promised them I would get them a city council, it's done. We finally did it. I'd like to thank the youth for coming out and taking for, to get involved with the community. This is, they're getting involved. We have young people now that's going to get involved, and that's a big deal. They're our future. So I would like the community, please, behind the city council, this youth council, and get with them, because they're going to, I'm going to tell you something. December 3rd last week, I went to the Sears Activity Center, and we had a, we had an election. Parents showed up, I had about thirty parents, I had about, might be ten youths that came out, and listen to these young people. They are very, very smart. They talk very well, they think very well, and I'm very, very proud of them. It's not just me, I had a, a council that was behind me that gave me ideas, and we went with it and we did it. So we should be very, very proud of our youth. They're going to come up, they're up-and-coming leaders are coming up, so let's back them and show them that we're behind them. December 20th, next week, we're going to have these youth come in and they'll be sworn into office. So make sure if you've got nothing else to do tomorrow, next, on the 20th of December, come in and back these young people as they get sworn into office. That night at six o'clock, they will have their own meeting, they will sit up here, just like we do, and they will, to discuss things that, I don't know what, we're going to make an agenda for them, so our little, our council will have to, I'm talking about the, the council that I have, will have to make what's coming up. So, I, at this point, I'm very, very proud of them, they did a tremendous job, and I want everybody to come out and see these youth, they're tremendous. They're smart, smart kids. I had one girl told me that she's not very proud of Hutch. I'm not going to mention her name. She's a new council member on the youth council, and that kind of hurt me a little bit, but that's the truth. She was speaking the truth, and she's under eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, she was telling us what it's about. She, we heard what the youth meant, so let's, let's get behind them and help them change Hutchinson and so forth. Yes, I mean, that's all I got, I believe in the youth, and let's get behind them. On next Saturday, the 10th, I have a meeting, every, every couple of months I have a meeting. Here it is, I have a, a meeting with the neighborhood in my district, the southeast district. Please come out, anybody come out to this meeting. We sit down and we talk about, I let them, I let them know what's going on, what's going on the council, they can ask questions of me or whatever. I get to know my southeast district, this is probably the fifth meeting I've had. It's going to be at the Christian Grace, Crace Christian Church, 805 East Avenue, be coming on to the back. It's going to be at 10 o'clock, we talk about anything, we discuss, I hear what they have to say, they hear what I have to say, and it's my fifth meeting, and it's doing real well. So come out, doesn't matter what district you believe in, please come out and see, you'll see these all, all over the place, please come out and join, join, join us, see what's going on. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you so much, Steve. One thing I wanted to cover is something I meant to bring up during our consent agenda. We made a lot of appointments today, and I was hoping that Dave and/or Rebecca, who worked really hard on retooling that process, could discuss how we're doing it now and the work that went into changing it.
Good morning. Dave Sotelo, human relations officer. We were joking before the meeting that even the tree board had competition this year, no offense to the tree board. Yeah, it was a good process, I think we're, we're trying to get it right, there's still a lot to learn, just trying to bring in new voices to our, to our boards and commissions. Certainly, I think it, it makes us do a little bit more work. There's more work on, on the council to review those applications, since we have so many work on Linda, to send all those applications out to the people that need to see them, and so it just makes us be more conscious of, of how we are recruiting. I don't have initial numbers of what the makeup of those applications and then of the, of the commissions are like. I'm hoping to do that after the beginning of the year as part of the new policy, to just see the demographics of who we are appointing, and that gives you a better picture. I'm grateful for the partnerships and trying to recruit people to serve in those commissions. You probably saw that we did a lot of marketing efforts to try to increase awareness of these boards and commissions. And one thing that I'm learning, which I think you mentioned early on in this process, asking people to serve is still so important, but that doesn't mean that I ask people to serve, or that you ask people to serve, or that people on those boards. It's just, if we are seeing leadership in our community, just encouraging people to get engaged and apply for those positions, to try to have as many voices as we can. So, yeah, really excited with the turnout, there, there was competition in some of these open positions, and it made it fun for us to just see those applications and try to figure out who fits where, and we hope that interest in our city boards and commissions continues.
Wonderful. And as a reminder, it's a once a year now? Is that how, how, the public has like sixty days? I just want people to, to know how it all works.
So, how we're working it now is, once a year, all of our terms will expire at the same time, so every January 1st, we'll have made appointments for the following terms. We will hold on, we do encourage people to apply for boards and commissions that might not have openings, because things happen during the year, sometimes people have to leave their term early, and that allows us to have a bank to pull from. But we will be announcing each October, sorry, I had to remember, three months, what boards and commissions were specifically looking for, as well as all the others, and start doing a broader campaign to get interest in those. Speaking to what Dave said, the board that I liaise on for, we had several applicants whose names I've never heard, which might not seem like a big deal, but it kind of is when the status quo has been, we reach out to someone who reached, you know, who reaches out to someone, and usually it, it doesn't spread as far as we'd like. And so there were several people who applied who I'd never heard of, some of them were appointed, and it was nice to have those options. For those who applied and didn't get selected, just know it has nothing to do with necessarily the quality of the applicant, or there's an element of bringing different expertise from different areas for each of these boards. So if we had someone leave who has a historical knowledge of the community, we probably want to fill that piece. So just know, keep applying. We hate to turn anyone away who wants to be involved, so you're always welcome to come to the meetings as well, if you want to be involved in that way, and to keep applying in future years. And if you didn't get in this year, if you didn't apply this year, know that this is a great way to take that first step into community engagement. I guess it might be a little further than the first step, but a little deeper step into being engaged in your council, because this is how, these are the bodies that make recommendations for council to act on, so.
Wonderful. Well, thank you again, both, for your work, and I, I'm excited about the potential for this to build our leadership capacity, as well as engage a more diverse group of people.
And I just want to clarify, so it was always a seventy-five, I think, day process of opening and announcing the position? We just were not doing that.
Yeah.
And so it's still the same process, but now it starts on a more uniform way at the end of the year, when we make those appointments. And I think there's a few boards that are still due to make appointments, so you'll see that sometime, either, either the next meeting or at the beginning of the year.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you both again. Again, welcome, Kendall, and thank you to all, all of our community partners in tourism and in childcare who attended the meeting today, and we had, had a really kind of monumental meeting, some, these things we've been working on for months or years, it kind of came to fruition, so that was fun.
Ms. Mayor, I got one question.
Uh huh.
Ms. Ma, will you please stand up, please? Is she gone? No, she is, she is on my board, I'm sorry you were so short, you were hiding behind that window, I didn't forget about you, but I just noticed you right now. So, she's also on the board of the youth council. Thank you, Ms. Ma.
Goodness, small but mighty. All right, what do you have, Gary?
Good morning, council. I wanted to also welcome Kendall, and I'll be working over the next thirty days to help make a smooth transition. We've already had some discussions, and I have more along the way, and I'll provide him with some information that hopefully will be helpful to him. I want to mention, just kind of remind everyone about the noon meeting today. It'll be at the Reverse Osmosis Plant, 23rd and Severance, and that will be with the county commission, talking about things like economic development and partnerships in growth of, in the county. Also, to maybe answer your question, Mayor, too, we had planned, we were waiting on the report, and I, and by the way, I would, I do think this is a great report, and will really help the community, so I really appreciate the report that was done and, and what the K-Ready group has done. And we'll, I'm sure we'll be in contact with them, but we'll be working with the, the county or coordinating with the county. We're both working with iParametrics on this, and we'll be looking at ways we can use their money, our money, to help with this issue in our, in our community. So, beyond that, I don't have any other things to, to report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I guess we'll see everyone at noon, if there are motion to adjourn?
We have an executive session, Mayor.
Oh, man. Let's take a, we're going to take a short recess, but how long do you think we need for executive session?
Probably thirty minutes. I make the motion to adjourn?
No motion to adjourn.
Okay.
We, we tried.
All right, work.
Paul stared you down, so you know you were trouble.
I, I'd like an executive session from, let's do 10:40 to 11:10. That'll give us a five-minute break.
I'll make that motion, or second your motion.
Yes.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Richardson made the motion, fast seconded?
No.
No.
Jade made the motion.
I, I asked for a motion.
Oh, yes.
Kendall, I swear we're not this disorganized.
Sure. Thank you. Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
I must take her ball.
Yes.
Red Bull, Fred, blood to them.
I know.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25.
Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man.
Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25.
Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man.
Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25.
Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25.
Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25.
Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25.
Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25.
Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25.
Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until 11:25.
Till 11:25, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend all day together, didn't you?
I got it. Oh, yes.
First course next to...
All that he did was that without any extra. Come on, man. Yeah.
We have to sit there. So I would say 11:25. Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take another second.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Really, we have to sit there?
Hmm.
So I would say...
Eleven twenty-five?
Eleven twenty-five.
Due to technical difficulties, we won't be recording.
We'll take it in another session.
Okay, motion? Anybody?
Move to executive session until eleven point five.
Second.
Till eleven twenty-five, you say?
Yes, sir.
Let's see.
You guys just wanted to spend the whole day together, didn't you?
Oh, yes.
First course, thanks to...
Doing that without Billy, thank you.